I'd like to call the Monday, October 2nd, 2023 Smithfield School Committee meeting to order. Before we begin, if we could please all stand and say what you'd like.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Emergency evacuation and health notification. Notification. In the case of an emergency, there are two main exits out of the media center. They are located to the right and left side of the media center through the set of double doors. Proceed to follow the exit signs to the exit doorways. Restrooms are located to the right set of double doors. Facilities are located on the left. Up front here, there is a public comment signup sheet, notification form. Just sign, put your name and address on that if you do want to speak at the public comment section, which is at the end of the meeting. And you'll speak at the podium. Okay. First item number four, consider and vote on motion by roll call vote to convene executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 42-46-5A. Discussion, discussion, I'm having a good time with those tonight. Regarding the matter of security around General Laws 42-46-583, school security, review of executive session minutes of September 6th, 2023. This requires a motion?
Motion to convene executive session.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, and this will require individual votes. Ms. Saffron?
Aye.
Ms. Salwa?
Aye.
Ms. Terriosa?
Aye.
And Ms. Case?
Aye.
And myself, aye. We should not be too long. I'll report that were no votes taken in the executive session. We can move on to item number six, consent agenda items, which consist of 6.1, approval of minutes of the September 6th, 2002, oh yeah, that should be 2023. Minutes of the September 6th, 2023 School Committee meeting. Minutes, approval and sealing of executive session minutes of April 27th, 2023, and approval and sealing of executive session minutes of August 21st, 2023. Item 6.2, approval of bills, regular bills of fiscal year 23 of $648.41, fiscal year 2024 of $292,568.26, for a total of $293,216.67. Direct checks from August 31st, 2023 to September 28th, 2023, totaling $111,898.39, and approval of homeschooling. Item 6.4 is being withdrawn due to contractual. So this will require a motion and a phone call.
Motion to approve consent agenda items.
Motion has been made in second. Are there any questions, comments?
I have one question on bills. Page 41, it says custom hockey jerseys. I know we're looking at all the capital improvements. I was wondering if we could look at jerseys too, to see how outdated some of these are? Because I just see hockey, I don't know if it's, is it boys, is it girls? Just kind of looking to see where we are with jerseys.
Do you have a response for that? That you can enlighten us?
Yeah, so, yes, we have a cycle here, so usually it's every four years. Some clubs, if they're going to pay for the majority of them, go ahead and do it on their own. So boys hockey, for example, has their booster club. So that is going, basically each team mostly gets a budget each season, so it's usually between 500 and 900. So they're using $600 of their yearly budget to go towards uniforms, and then they're paying for the rest. So they're jumping ahead of theirs because they're going to go ahead and pay for the majority of themselves. But traditionally, it's a four-year cycle for everything. Or a little bit further for football, because those cost a lot more.
Yeah. How do you decide which programs get 500 and which get?
Yeah, so that was pre-built before I got here, so I'd have to investigate that a little bit further, but it's pretty, it's consistent from girls versus boys, so there's equitability there for sure.
Not me. Blessing me.
Is that before you?
Before me, after Tony will say that.
I think I have an idea what it is. I know, I remember Chris talking about trying to get a rotating schedule where every periodical different team-
You're talking uniforms?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 there's a four-year cycle, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And obviously, it comes down to what's available, so this year, we skipped a few on some of them because some of our other expenses are a little bit higher, so it does adjust a little bit, but traditionally, it's a four-year cycle.
Is there any, is there anywhere we can get a list of them? Trevor, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Number, item seven, the high school student representative report. So we have Eva and Anthony Henry. Take it away.
We have a pretty long report because a lot has been going on since the start of the year. So we started the year off with a bang, promo cookies, and Smithfield donated over 800 cookies for the first day of school for students to have during lunch. And this was followed up the next day by Slice and Scoop donating 10 large pizzas for teacher's lounge to bank back for all they do for us. During the first week of September, every member of this year's National Honor Society was formally inducted into the society, and it was a lovely night. On Saturday, we had our homecoming dance. This was the first time in many years that we've held it in the gym. It was a semi-formal dance, and although last year had some pretty low turnout, I'm pleased to say that this year, we had over 400 students buy tickets and come to celebrate our school. Today was the first day of Spirit Week. We had Decade Day, and we had a lot of turnout. Tomorrow, and if you're looking for a post-meeting meal, I highly recommend you go to Chipotle, where the student body is hosting a fundraiser, where 33% of proceeds go back to the student body. Tomorrow is Class Color Day, and we're going to have a parade to showcase all the various clubs and activities that Smithfield High School has to offer. Wednesday is BBQ Dad versus Soccer Mom, where his kids can dress up as either two options. And then that night, we're having hypnotist and comedian Frank Santos come to the high school at 7:00. Tickets are going to be sold at the door for $10. Thursday is our Green and Gold Day. Students are encouraged to go all out and show all their school spirit. We're going to cap the day off with a pep rally that will showcase all of our fall sports teams, and we'll also have students go head-to-head in different games. And of course, that night is the homecoming game at Bryant, and we hope that the whole town will show up to support our team. And at halftime, we will announce the homecoming royalty. Friday, we have anything but a backpack day. Self-explanatory, just don't bring a backpack. And then that night, senior class will come together to paint their parking spots. And finally, this is a new note because it's not related to the SHS, but Pleasant View has begun the process of formulating a student council to get more kids involved in their school.
Last week, last week, each class at Smithfield High School is able to paint designs on the windows of either the glass hallway or the cafeteria in preparation for Spirit Week. And the class of 2025 through 2027 has their artwork in the glass hallway, and the senior class has their artwork in the cafeteria. Smithfield High School's Future Business Leaders of America chapter held its first chapter meeting last week. With more than 60 students in membership, the chapter is ready to accomplish great things this year. The Smithfield High School debate team also held their first meeting last week. And as debate team captains, Henry and I are excited for the team's upcoming tournaments this year, the first of which is on November 18th, 2023. Last week, the freshman class also held their first elections for class officers. The president that was elected is John Rinaldi. The vice presidents are Camille Roque-Tai and Elijah Barros. The secretary is Chloe Albright. The treasurer is Maha Sayuni. And the social chairs are Eli Themis and Lorenzo Grassi. Congratulations to all the new officers. And to conclude my report, the junior class has begun selling Amy's apples during Smithfield High School's lunches this week. Just a few of the flavors that are being sold are Holiday M&M, Oreo Kefu Madness, and Smores Golar apples. All orders will be ready for pickup on Halloween.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Move on now to item number eight, to discuss and approve of donation to high school boys hockey team in the amount of $1,149 for video software.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I can call up athletic director Jason Gove for item eight and nine.
Thank you. Yes, boys hockey is seeking to accept a donation in the amount of $1,149 to pay for their video analysis software, Huddle. The donation comes from one of the boys, our Perry Arseness aunt, Maria Marcos. Just a simple video analysis system. They were going to do fundraising, but she opted to deny the full amount.
If not, this will require a motion.
Motion to approve soccer donation.
And a second.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. No further questions or comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Move on to number nine, discuss and approve of the high school athletic trips. Kevin?
Hey, Mr. Gove.
Thank you. A few to go through here. First one is cross-country, November 11th, November 10th to the 11th, from New England Interscholastic Championships. This is just a proactive request. It's if any of our athletes qualify for the New England Championships, which doesn't always happen. It's just proactive request. It will take place in Belfast, Maine. It would require the students, should they participate, to be dismissed early on Friday, the 10th. It would require an overnight stay. I'm in a hotel, but again, that would be purely with their parents. This would not be a bus. Obviously, with so few students, they'd be with parent transportation. Between $70, $90, probably out of pocket. And that's that full request.
Do you want to take these individually, or should we?
Sure. Mr. Gove, fall cross-country, girls hockey.
Girls hockey. Girls hockey is a request on January 10th, 2024, for a non-league game in Falmouth, Massachusetts, against Falmouth High School. This has been one of our items over the last couple of years to increase the girls hockey schedule by getting more non-league games, very similar to the boys hockey schedule. In order to do so, you'd have to travel a little bit further to get some of these games, so to travel to Falmouth outside of 60 miles. It's a same-day trip, so nothing overnight. It would be through DECO, and that would be paid for through the athletic budget. Out of pocket would be potentially just a few bucks for a meal on the way back.
Boys hockey overnight trip, St. Doms.
Boys hockey overnight trip, three nights in December, Lewiston, Maine. This is their traditional trip during Christmas break. They'll compete in three games over three days. Again, provides them a similar opportunity to the girls, but they're getting three non-league games. Keeps them fit during the break over Christmas when there's no league game scheduled. The money is paid for by either the booster club or parents. The situation would be about $250 out of pocket. Any, in this situation, it would be a higher amount. If any of the players cannot pay, the booster club will pay the full amount for those players.
Boys basketball overnight?
Yeah. Again, here, traditional trip for boys basketball, over two days, 12/27, 12/28, again, over Christmas break, so are trying to get some games in during that downtime. This would be parent transportation. It's in Groton, Connecticut, Fitch High School. They participate in this basketball tournament every year, two games over two days, same hotel they traditionally use. Out of pocket, but just for meals as well as a little bit for the hotel, so probably under 100 bucks per student. Again, if they cannot pay for that, it does come out of the boys basketball activities count.
Any questions? If not, will require a motion?
Move, do we accept the trips?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. This is, we're accepting all four of these, just so you know for the motion, okay? So no further comments or questions? If, okay, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, and the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Very good. Item number 10, discuss and approve a donation of Rockwall for Pleasant View Elementary School gymnasium.
Pleasant View's PTO president, Ms. Cazaz, is here to answer any questions. This is for the installation of a rock wall at Pleasant View Elementary.
Okay, so Rockwall will be going in the gym. The PTO has raised enough money to cover the complete cost. The cost of the Rockwall supplies is $7,165, and installation is $1,723. So the donation is a total of $8,865.23. We've already met with the guy that's going to install it, so we just need to get the donation approved.
Okay. Any questions? This is fantastic. I know the one at La Perche is heavily utilized. It's the same one, same size and everything.
Same brand, same one.
No, I appreciate, I know, I know, man, you've been involved and everything, the huge amount of effort to raise the funds, but the kids are going to love it, so thank you for all your efforts. Okay, this will require a motion?
Motion to approve donation of Rockwall.
Motion has been made in second. No further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Good luck. Look at the invoice, the print is so small, I thought it said Everest. It did, I had to bring it up. It's Everest or something like that.
It's close.
I thought they'd set their heights really high, got to go Everest, hang on. Okay, item number 11, discuss and approve athletic field logo design.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are five logo designs that have come through, well, three of those have come through the Boyle Committee. These are for you to, to look at, vote on. I can, if you would like, I can put these up on the screen for everybody to see. You received copies in your packets. There is one designed that the Boyle Project Committee does favor.
Do you want me to hit the screen?
Sure.
Okay.
Right-click on the, right-click right on the screen from Hollywood. Sharing. Can't do this upside down.
I'll say she did it. I witnessed it. She followed the directions.
She's got it in the yellow. Two screens. Yellow with the white background. Do that on the field. The one with the, it looks like, it looks like an Egyptian.
I'm not sure if I saw that, that like-
I don't know, I don't know, it just seems like it goes back to like the hair.
Oh, I see what it is.
All right.
There you go. Okay.
This is design number one. It's a, it's a white background with the green S. This is, am I too obvious? Just tell me to stop. Number two, the green S in the green background. Choice number three, this was the Boyle Committee's approved. This is a gold S with a white background. The fourth is a sentinel head.
Is that what it is? Really?
That is the sentinel.
It looks like an Egyptian.
Looking sideways. Again, these are by the architect, so I did not draw these. And the fifth is another sentinel. So these were all created by the architect for the project. Again, so the field is as-is. There are, I just want to go back to an earlier statement, there are no sentinel names on the field. So it would just be the design in the middle of a field of one of these drawings. So these are not painted on, these are actually part of the turf, so the decision that the committee makes tonight will be contacting the architect tomorrow to go forward to start the design. As you've seen, the field is coming along and just about ready for turf.
Do we need to make a motion before this?
All right, we can make a motion now. I think we're going to approve one, yes.
Motion to approve athletic field logo design.
Okay. A second.
We're talking about the one on the-
Well, we're talking about just that we're going to approve it, and then we'll discuss which one.
Well, in that case, I think we should wait. Unless you're going to move to approve a particular one right now, just wait till the committee's come to some idea.
Okay, discussion on which ones we want to, instead of start off there.
Can I ask just a follow-up question? Because I think it was my question that you were responding to. So nothing will be in the end zones, no Smithfield, no sentinels?
No, no, that was not in the cost. I think at one time, it had been decided, but it is cost.
Can you answer questions? No? Okay. I looked to Rosemary, because you're on their committee, I didn't know if you're able to answer questions, if it was all cost-related decisions, why we can't have any-
I can imagine it would interfere with the lining as well.
All fields have them in college.
It's cost, but also what the OPM explained to us, and Angela, if I have this incorrectly, as the fields are clean, more intricate designs and letters do get worn down over time, with this being part of the turf. Unless you're cutting it out and replacing it, you can't just repaint it on. So the more intricate it is, the more maintenance.
And most of the, I guess, most of the fields that have that something in the end zone, just play football there. You see the soccer lines and the lacrosse lines, they would be going through that, and they have to be spaced around them. It wouldn't, it wouldn't look good either. You know, like I said, most of them, they do it, you see it on a pro football game.
Yep.
All you see is the end zone, there's no soccer lines there.
Yep.
So if we're going to play lacrosse, we're going to play soccer, we're going to play football. You know, we need that, the simpler, the simpler is better. And again, as she said, it's going to wear. The more you put on the field, the more, and you can't, it's not just like a gym where you repaint, you repaint a line. This is, this is a photo, an effect that's in, that didn't, I say it's not right, but they're like, they're like knitting this field now, you know, and that's going to be inside the design of the, of the field.
I personally, even if, especially if we're not having sentinels at the end, I would vote to have the sentinel in the middle. For the past five-plus years, we've seen the sentinel sort of slowly go away for some reason in a lot of places, and we just see the block letter S.
I think we do, do need to check on something. That is the UMass logo. We may have a copyright problem with that. I know we went away from using that on some of our stuff because somebody mentioned that it was, in fact, Ben looked it up immediately, and as soon as he looked it up, there it was. The only difference was it, it was, had a maroon hat on.
So I'm sure we could have our own sentinel. Have we never had our own? Is that the problem? We stole this years ago?
No, we, we had the-
Okay, look at Richard's, Richard's shirt has the original.
What's on Richard's shirt?
Yes.
Glad you brought it up.
The law of the SEC.
Mr. Gove is trying to contribute to the conversation.
So last year, we did do, we have a branding guide, you can see it on the website, so we kind of went away from the sentinel because there was just nothing that we came up with, or we even went to a graphic designer and came up with nothing. So there was, we went with the S as the, is what the identity is now.
I'm going to miss, I miss the sentinel. Like, where the-
So we, we, we went through hundreds of them, there just wasn't anything great, and of course, you have the issue of even the Minuteman one, he's holding a gun, which isn't a great thing either. But the one that does exist is a copyright of the UMass version, but slightly colored different.
We're in a world with tons of graphic designers. I mean, I think we could design an awesome sentinel for us.
Yeah, so that's where we settled on, so that's how we, you can check out that branding guide that we threw together, that's how, the direction we went with uniforms, too, just because it is easier to get that S on a lot of things than how intricate that Minuteman was, even though it's copyrighted in the first place.
They're such just boring. Like, I don't know, it's just like, S, like, it's just-
We went in the direction of, so if you look like Michigan State, for example, and there's just the block white S, trying to keep it as simple as you could for things like uniforms and things like that from a branding identity standpoint, to make it easier.
The other aspect is the sentinel can be on a press box or in the other.
Exactly, yep. And there is also the option, the end zones we talked about, if you wanted to one year, you could, football could do fundraising like that, you could paint, we could paint it in there, and it just wouldn't last that long, and you can wipe it off. So if you wanted it for like the opening football season, you could put something in there for, with paint.
So what we're saying, though, is we actually can't vote tonight because one of the votes is, one of the designs is not-
Well, it's going to be voted tonight, because I think it's going to be-
Yeah, we're going to decide.
It's, it's going to go, it's going to go to the design people that are doing the field. If, if we're going to get this done at the end of, beginning of December, the field has to, the field has to be made, starting now, not, you know. That's what we were told, we were told at the last meeting.
Has to be made.
Even for the press box, we can't technically put that S on.
But it's, it's easier to remove if we get caught.
Yeah, it's just, I don't know, I think that's so boring.
I was glad, I know who requested the additional design.
Yeah, I remember.
I was happy to see it. I thought it was great, and then I show up there and he bursts my bubble, when he goes, that's the UMass. Look, so I was all set to vote for the sentinel, but it sounds like we don't have the time to do our due diligence as to whether we're going to have to cut it out with the-
All right, we're just putting all this money into this field to just have a S in the center, it just seems like, where's the sentinel?
I think our attorney has a comment.
So unfortunately, I'm not familiar with the timeline here, when this needs to be approved, but from what, as Tony is saying here, this does need to be approved this evening. It came to my attention tonight that this image may be problematic due to the fact that it is, with the exception of it being colored green and gold, is a carbon copy of the image that UMass Dartmouth utilizes.
UMass Dartmouth?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, UMass.
UMass Amherst is the Minuteman.
UMass Amherst, yep, I'm mistaken.
Yeah, and they don't use it anymore.
I don't know the status of the copyright, I'm being told that there is a copyright here, but we would have to research that to see if we could move forward with it, and I suspect that the case is we cannot.
When we shot it, this, I emailed Mr. Kelly, who was involved with, texted Mr. Kelly, I just received, 43 minutes ago, UMass logo was a copyright issue.
Right. So I think what we're saying, if we want to have a vote tonight, and we have something in there that it sounds like there's possibly multiple school committee members interested in, that we can vote if you would like an S or a sentinel, and if it's a sentinel, we got to figure out how we can get it done, and if that's in tapping into our design team here at the school or somewhere else to design a logo for us.
I don't know if we have the time, though, do we?
It's time to be done. You want, you can have the logo, but maybe not the field, you know what I mean, you know what I'm saying?
So they've told us we cannot, we have to give them a decision tonight.
They told us this is going to be done, at the last meeting, which was a month ago, because the meeting was, we were told that at this meeting was like the drop-dead date to decide what goes in the middle of the field. Now, drop-dead might mean a week, okay? Because we're actually, well, we got to Thursday.
They have to, they have to actually manufacture it in the, in the field, and it has to be stretched out and, you know, put on properly, and I think they want to have that done by the first week of December, ballpark. Just to let you know, UMass does not use that logo. UMass uses U-Mass, period. They've gone away from anything on that. I'm a graduate there, so I can tell. And they, if you want, maybe I'll talk to the chancellor and see if we can get permission. The, the, they haven't used anything to do with the Minuteman, although there are still the UMass Minutemen and Minutewomen. They have not used that in years, they just-
Maybe-
Yeah.
Can we make a motion pending that we get approval on the copyright for that sentinel? Or how does that work?
Well, so if there is an existing copyright on the image, we would have to ask permission, and it'd be granted permission to utilize it, which may either cost additional funds, if they want to, if they're not using it anymore, and they don't mind us utilizing it, then there might be some type of agreement we can enter into that wouldn't cost any money. But in all likelihood, you need to essentially license that, license the use of that image.
At the very least, you got to get their permission.
Correct. And that, I imagine, would take a significant amount of time, more than just giving a phone call to somebody at UMass tomorrow morning. Do we have a clarification on, on the timeline? If this is something that the committee can hold off on?
This is something that the turf will wait until we have the logo decided, so there will be a time crunch. There are two sentinels, though. Is there one that is a preference?
Not that one, not that one.
That one's great, I like that one, but-
The other one, I don't know what it is.
Those two were provided to us by the architect?
No.
I don't know if we could do a first and second?
No. Can we, can we approve the yellow one if we can't get the-
Get the sentinel? But you're saying that you don't think the sentinel can be gotten in a fashionable time frame, anyway? So I'd hate to approve that, where, what kind of differences would need to be made for us to be able to do that? I mean, graphic design-wise, like, somebody can literally spit that out in two days.
Oh, yeah.
So if you're telling me we have enough time to see if we have a copyright issue, we have enough time to get somebody to design it for us? Especially in an event where we're doing something for our community, for what our essential namesake is of the school, that we've been, I mean, everyone identifies as a sentinel. Um, if you were to talk about this amongst, like, I haven't gotten any feedback from anybody who wanted the S repeatedly, Ben, where the sentinel, where has the sentinel gone? So, I'd hate to-
I don't disagree with you, I just, unfortunately, we're just up against it many times, so-
Right, right.
And, and here's, if we whip up one, and we just, like, that's usually something we'd want community input on, if you like this design, what design do we like? You know, like, I, I just, I don't know if that's gonna blow up in our face if we just kind of whip one up very quickly. Unless it's very close to that one, which is, once again, a copyright issue. So I would prefer to have that one, I like that one.
I would too, I would as well.
So I, I don't know, we're at an impasse, I don't know what, where the-
If you, if you wanted to speak, yes, I'll be in trouble.
Rosemary Cipriano, Brayton Road, and Denver with the, with the Boyle complex. You could get a two for it, and when I say a two for it, with the S on the field, and then with the press box, and even once we get everything else in place as far as, not only the press box, but, um, with the facility for the bathrooms and everything else, putting sentinel or sentinels on there, so you, you, you get both. But right now, the, the timing, um, in order for us to, we're, we're on time, and Angelo can certainly, he's ready to go to give the information tomorrow, or we have our meeting on Thursday, so that they can, they can move to get the construction, get the turf all ready to go in within the next couple of weeks. So this is important, so that we're on time, and we've got that field ready. We've got weather that we go up against, too. I don't wanna be into next, this is May, but I don't wanna be into the, into the winter, and we're saying, oh, well, we have the field ready because of a sign. But you do have an opportunity, you've got the S, a lot of schools do this. And then, again, with the sentinels, to have it in other areas. And really having a big one where people can see it. You've got other things that you'll be able to do on the sides that would, would be available after. So, I mean, there, there's that that's there. And I can tell you, as far as the copyright, I went up against the copyright when I was a principal, and with Wisconsin, and you don't wanna go there. You don't wanna go into, into that area at all. So to stay away from the possibility of whatever could happen when you want, when you want to, in that direction. But again, like I said, you've got two opportunities, but think beyond, you've got that in the field, and then where you can have sentinels that really would be showing, and people seeing them all the time, regardless of where they're sitting.
Thank you, Ruth. Any other comments?
I know we're discussing the, uh, press box, uh, bid tonight. Was there a design on that already?
There's no design on it currently.
Because that might, that might pose on to the alternative, if you can't do it, if it's too problematic for the center of the field to go nuts with giant, huge ones, you know? And if they're, if they're print, you know, like, what do you call it, the, uh, you know, you get the maps, whatever. God forbid we have to get challenged, we, we, we'll do it a little easier than the center of the field. So, I, I agree, I wish, I wish we could go with the original sentinel design. It doesn't sound like, time-wise, and problematic, but I'll defer to you guys on which way you wanna go, if you think you can make it work somehow.
The only, the only recommendation I can make, or suggestion, if you wanted to do it, is vote for one, have a second one, and if it doesn't, the timing doesn't work out, you go to the second one. If, if, if you really wanted the sentinel, you put the sentinel as our primary one, and we would have a date in the motion, I would say, if we haven't got it figured out, buy whatever. But I do know they have to have it, um, in terms not in gray, it's actually sewn in or whatever, into the fabric, knit it, I like Tony's thing, knit it in. It, it actually goes into the fabric, and, and they, I know that the schedule is they've wanted to have it down. Before the winter, you can't, I guess you can't be doing this stuff over the colder months, so. So I don't know what, without having the thing on timeframe, I would definitely say if we haven't found this out by the end of October, or somewhere, pick a date, we should go with the S, that's just my judgment. But if we can go with this, then let's maybe shot at it.
Do we, do we have to also consider the cost factor? I, I don't imagine the way they do things now with computers, what you put is gonna be that different. But it might be something where the sentinel is extremely more expensive, because we are kind of, you know, while we're, we're going along pretty well, we're not, we're not, we don't have extra money.
I would imagine that information was gathered and prepared, both of these decisions, before we were presented with a vote for this.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but like, again, you know, I don't have the city- The sentinel was not even on the table when we discussed this in the last meeting, so. The, the others are all basically the same, so, you know, I don't imagine there'll be any difference.
Probably a fixed cost for those.
You know, well, we got the expert over there.
Additional.
Mr. Kuci?
Just so you have additional information, we're waiting, we have been waiting two weeks for this decision, or the architect, and the designer is waiting two weeks for this decision to come forward. We are in the process of waiting to produce the artificial turf, so we're two weeks behind on that. So we might have to wait for this vote, so we could actually get your choice to go forward. So it's not like we can wait any further. They really, they want, by next week, they want to be putting the turf in with this vote goes forward. So that's where we're at, just so you know what timeline we're on, we're a little bit behind on that. And no offense to, we had the three S's, and I know tonight you're looking at two additional pieces, but just to keep in mind, we do have the press box. We also have the scoreboard, too, is a high visual aspect on the field. Scoreboard's a big scoreboard, so isn't a real estate, the sentinel, the report, so.
I mean, I think another area concerning, we've had this sentinel for how long? And it's, we've had copyright issues with it? At what point are we gonna do a new sentinel? Like, if this is not, if we can't use this engine, are we-
That, that particular thing is what UMass uses for, they have what they call Sam the Minuteman. It's not their, you know, they use UMass for everything. But they go to their games, and they'll have Sam the Minuteman. This type of thing, or something similar to this, has been what Smithfield has used since 1966, when the student body voted it in. So, uh, you know, and there's lots of things, I'm, I'm thinking right now, this, uh, there used to be a company called Continental Insurance Company that had a very much similar to this sentinel. They are no longer, they got merged with somebody, so who knows, maybe theirs is fine. But the, the point being, I, I think at this point, we should go, and now, after hearing what Angelo says, we should go with the S. There'll be an entranceway, maybe we have something painted on that, there's a press box, there's a- We got a lot of other areas where I think we can put something in. We don't wanna lose it, um, we don't wanna be the S team, that's it, we wanna be the sentinels. Everybody that I know has come up with a date, always refer to us as the sentinel.
Well, what's the next step for this, the sentinel? Like, how do we get a sentinel, then? What's, like, do we have a plan for it?
Well, this, this is strictly this, and then what we have to do is we have to make sure that in the, on the entranceway, or the scoreboard, or the other things, that right now, we tell that committee that if there's any decorations on it, it's gonna be a sentinel. We gotta do it.
How do we get, like, an approved copyrighting?
Oh, it's designed, well, now we got the time, if we make the design-
But I don't think we have the time, right? So this particular issue came up, and then before we know it, all of a sudden, the box is gonna be the two. So I think what you're saying is, we have to be prepared now.
Yeah, yeah, we start, if you want, if we're still concerned with the copyright issue, sorry, I should turn the mic on. We're concerned with the copyright issue, um, and, but we definitely wanna have it on the press boxes, which I absolutely agree, um, we, the press box gets built, this goes on after the fact. This isn't woven into the wall, the press box, it goes on as a print, it goes on as a paint, you know, something like that. So we do have time to commission a new design for, you know, the consideration of you guys.
And the only one you're gonna have any type of problem with is that one we're looking at right there, because that's the one that is right now some type of proprietary, um, property of the University of Massachusetts cameras, in one shape or another. But there's, as you pointed out, there's a lot of ways you can draw a sentinel, when somebody can do it. And we can happy with it, and we should make sure that it's done, so that when it comes to approval of another thing, it's not, you know, they know, they know what our wishes are.
Yeah, we have a sentinel on it. I think this one's in the hallway, too, near the gym, right?
We have a full-dressed human being show up at every game in this exact costume.
That's true, yeah, so I think we're gonna-
Just so that the committee is also aware, for their information, there is one school committee member on the, on the Boyle project. It is a representative body that is making the recommendations. So the only recommendations that had come forward to the Boyle project were actually the S's. The, um, just to answer why it was a little bit late coming on, this was a request that I made, following several school committee members asking if it was possible, and the architect did draw that, so we actually haven't had that a full two weeks. We've had it briefly, but, um, if there's another way that we can make the sentinel work, but on the Boyle project, there certainly are town members, as well as, um, school personnel and a school committee member.
So we will need a motion to approve a logo, gotta go forward.
I vote that we approve the gold S.
Give me a second.
I, I actually, I have no opinion on the S's, so.
You're approving just the motion?
Yeah, so I, I'll second the motion, but, um, I defer to you guys, I'll give on your preference.
The motion is that we approve the gold letter S, and do you have a number on that?
This is the-
My screen doesn't, so.
This should be the third design.
Okay, design number three, the gold S. That has been made in second, further discussion on this. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That's the one, you guys, I know you want the original one.
I'm not, yeah, I, I'm, I'm gonna vote against, and only because I just, I feel very passionate about this, and the logo, our front and center representation of our school should be den center. I feel like we were kind of backed into this, I don't think that was done intentionally by any means, but I just, I think it should at least be explored. It sounds like we went from trying to find if there was even a small avenue, to then just voting against it, so it wouldn't be my preference, and I would vote no.
Yeah, no for that one.
So it's three to two, motion carries, that one. And I think the committee has the idea that before they put anything on any other thing there, they gotta let us know, we gotta get some type of sentinel.
If I, I make a suggestion, if I remember correctly, didn't art graphics design class last year help design the, uh, Smithfield used basketball? Now, I don't know if this is too, um, what would you say, too complex for them? But if it isn't, is this something we can let them sink their teeth into?
I think so. I've come to art night here, I think you were here one of those nights, too. I'm pretty sure these things could float on the water, so.
So maybe that's something we, I, I don't know how we would float that, I don't wanna force a teacher to do that project, but if they're looking for something to do, is this something we can at least suggest to them, that they can start presenting, or drafting some sentinel logos?
I think we can definitely bring that idea across, and certainly the administrators from the high school are here tonight as well.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 12. Google to award bid for the RFP for Grandstand and Press Box for the Boyle Athletic Field Project.
I don't know, shall we approve, approve the approval?
Well, first, let's have Superintendent can give the background here, and then we can go.
So this did go up to bid, um, two times to be able to do the, uh, press box. If you have any questions, I'm gonna ask Angelo to come up to the microphone.
Any questions? I think that the, the motion should have the, uh, the successful bidder in it, so that we know who it is. Dan, the A-N-T Clayton, it looks like.
Dan Clayton was the low bidder, there were three bids that, um, that initially were sent out, one decided not to bid on it, Dan Clayton was the low bidder.
Is that, that's okay to put in the motion?
Okay, I mean, we, uh, where am I? I approve the RFP, uh, to, uh, Dan, Dan is D-A-N-T, Clayton? Dan Clayton as the lowest bidder.
Second? Motion is made in second. Proceed. Do you have any questions?
Yes, just so you have the information, before you, with Dan Clayton there, you'll see the bid that went out was for 550-seat capacity, that's the RFP. Dan Clayton makes a prefabricated, um, version, which is 487 seating capacity, and we just wanted to have the option as a group, the Boyle committee, you can, this, I think it's what, 63 seats, you can save almost $16,000. And I think the difference between those two numbers and what the savings would be is considerable. So that's why when they both have bids for 550, that was the RFP, and we asked for bids for 487 from both, and Dan Clayton was the lowest on both.
That was the first question I had, just, do we have previous attendance numbers from games? I mean, I feel like we, if the current bleachers were at capacity, and then we had people, are, are we assuming that this is more than enough, and that's why we're okay with a go with it, I assume?
Our bleachers, that were in place, were only 250. And you, as many of you have been in attendance, I don't think you've ever filled the 250 capacity, so. But I'm not, I'm trying to stay with the truth of the, the true of the RFP was 550, and try and match with any RFP, try to apples to apples. But I just thought for the committee going forward, they should have the option to review the 487 version and make a decision based on that.
Other questions?
One other question I had, when Leah talked about this last time, I just wanted to make sure I kept this straight. We were saying that we were using, or utilizing the state-level companies to purchase this equipment from, right? And then going to ask for the bid for contractors that were already working on the project. Was this somebody who was already, already working on the project who bid this, or is this a net new?
This is, so the option that we have with this RFP, we are purchasing from the lowest bidder. So that was from the state bid. But we did not secure, so what we have open is the assembly of the bleachers. So you notice how we broke it out for installation cost? That is what we're going to, someone hands out, we're gonna send that out again, to see if we can get a better price on the installation. So from this company, we can purchase the press box and bleachers directly, have them site drop, and have an independent contractor assemble them. And we're gonna see if that is a possibility.
So we had mentioned earlier that there is, so is there not a current design for the press box?
Oh, yes, there is.
There is, okay, so I thought you said it was.
That's what I'm the RFP, everybody did on the same design.
Okay, so it's prefabbed?
Uh, the press box we have, and the bleachers are also based upon seating capacity.
That's great, thank you.
And so what happens in the unfortunate incident, event, if we can't get anyone to bid on the installation?
We use the installation cost of low bidder that we have here. We just wanted to backdrop to see if we can even get a better price on that.
Great, thank you.
And this press box is set up so that we can put a logo of whatever nature?
It's a little less than 500 square feet.
On the back side of it?
Uh, front and back, the side of the press box itself.
I don't think, there wasn't a picture in here, right?
Uh, there is in the, uh, design.
That's okay, I, my concern, I assumed the, the grandstand length went right up to the front of it, and the back was-
And the press box is on the back.
Thank you.
Further questions? If not, motion is made in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Against, nay, the ayes have it. Item 13, discuss and review and approve invoice one and two for Green Acres Landscaping in the amount not to exceed $748,358.70. Superintendent, you can give us some background on that?
So Green Acres is the contractor for, um, the turf field. This is, what you'd be voting on is the cost for this project.
Okay, if we have to prove it, this does require a motion.
I vote we approve the invoices, one and two for Green Acres, not to exceed $748,300,
One second?
Second motion.
Okay, motion has been made in second. Any questions with regards to this? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Against, nay, the ayes have it. Item 14, discuss, review, and approve invoice for ArtGB Architects for OPM services in the amount not to exceed $6,432.62.
This is Steven Turner Incorporated for Commissioning Services. They now request it is not to exceed $6,938.50. The RGB Architects are acting as the school department's OPM.
Okay, one, one second, you, you did Turner.
I'm sorry.
We're up on the 14. This is the OPM.
This is submitted bid, this is Steven Turner. We're both looking at that one. This is the invoice, um, 6683-17 for RGB Architects for the costs associated for the OPM for the Boyle Field Project, not to exceed $6,432.62. This is committed for the, through the school capital funds.
Any questions? This, we had approved this OPM some time ago, they periodically send us bills, um, we've already, they're not gonna go over there. We've already, they're not gonna go over their top, so. Okay, would this will require a motion?
Motion to approve.
One second. Motion has been made in second. Any further questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Item 15, here we come with Steven Turner. Discuss, review, and approve invoice for Steven Turner, Inc. for Commissioning Services in the amount not to exceed $6,938.50.
This is seeking approval for payment pending the Boyle Athletic Field Complex Committee approval and the school committee approval. So this is, we'll be going before the Boyle Project on Thursday. This is for mechanical commissioning services, not to exceed $6,938.50.
This is a similar situation. We approved this commissioning services earlier, and these are periodic bills, so. A motion is required?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any further questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Item 16. Discuss and review and approve, discuss, review, and approve invoice for Honeywell Number Eight in the amount not to exceed $324,926.83.
As with the others, Honeywell has already been approved by the school committee. This is paying the most current bill, not to exceed $6,432. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is the Honeywell Project, not to exceed $324,926.83.
Okay, thank you. Questions? I just have a general question, how's Honeywell Project going? I know we, it affects our heating here in the building, and although today was beautiful, we want to make sure.
Angelo, we'll give you more detail, but I believe we are on, are on the timeline. We did put off the work on the rooftop of the high school because it would shut down our air conditioning units. But over the next two weekends, there will be work being done at the high school. Angelo?
So with Honeywell, we're at the 90% completed. So wood is a bit activated today. At Galway Middle School, it'll be activated tomorrow. By week's end, the system will be online. As we're working out the kinks on balancing at Steven Turner, that process will keep moving forward with our engine and everything system. This Saturday, we'll begin rooftop replace, removal, and replacement. So we'll move on Saturday, work during the week to prep, and then the following Saturday, install. And we'll also be doing the auditorium chilling units will be this Saturday coming also. So there will probably be four Saturdays in a row to complete the rooftop units. And that is just before the first week.
November 1, yeah. Okay, I know that was kind of what they were working as, as a goal. So it looks like we're barring anything unforeseen, and it looks like we're doing pretty good there.
Well, yes, we were gonna start in September, but it was abnormally very warm, so we backed off, we backed off the month of September because it was very warm to remove the air conditioning from the building. And now we're gonna move forward and weather permitting, people every weekend.
Further questions? If not, let's see, this one does not have a motion yet. We don't need a motion for this.
Motion to approve Honeywell invoice.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. No further questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Item number 17. To, actually, you know what? If we could, I think we're gonna move item 20 at this point, then, okay?
Great.
All right, we're gonna move, we're gonna take item 20 at this point in time, and then we'll come back to some of those others later. So item 20 is review and discuss the district's discipline, code of student conduct policy JK. This is a, is on here to, exactly what it says, review and discuss tonight. No action being taken. The idea is that school committee members can have any input as to what they think. We have administrators here, but obviously, the public also can add any input. This will all, can be taken notes by the superintendent, and something can be put together where we'll go into our normal first and second readings at a future date, a future meeting. So that's what we have right here. Madam Superintendent Turner?
This is the school committee's code of student conduct. The last time it was updated, it was 2018. So our administrators have reviewed this policy. In fact, it is part of their handbooks and guides student discipline in each of the schools. Certainly, you'll see on here, there are ranges for consequences that are more detailed within your hard copies. The ranges provide discretion for administrators in terms of what might be infractions. And that may be because of different levels or other circumstances. This is based on education laws as well from right. Towards the back, it certainly rides process for removal from school, which is the most significant consequence.
Okay, questions, comments from the school committee?
Before we have any questions, are we gonna have any feedback from the administration on the policy? I know you'd said you would have them here tonight. I didn't know if you wanted them to speak first or for us to ask questions.
I think they're ready for, if there's any questions, for instance, if you have any questions on how the policy might be used on there. But in terms of feedback, the feedback has been coming to me about potentials for revising the policy.
Question is, is the policies, and the policy's last updated in 2018, is it current with what we print in our handbooks and print online with our handbooks? Is there, I just want to make sure it's aligned.
It is aligned and it is current.
It is, okay, thank you.
And are additional protocols in place at each different school depending on age? I know we had talked about, you know, this is the code of conduct for the entire district. So things, protocol can vary depending on elementary versus middle and high school. So is that where we're seeing that instruction be held or at the protocol level? So they, they take this, this is their general guidance, right? And then do they have protocols in place, or is it every situation is case by case?
Some of it is case by case, but there are protocols. So certainly, I can call up an elementary principal, a middle school principal, and high school administrator in terms of how they might take the same policy and what they would consider if that would help to illustrate.
Yes, that would be great.
Mrs. Dorsey? Dr. Brevet? Dr. Lubinow?
No, no, I was just wondering like what the major differences are outside of the obvious that, you know, a child, not that we would ever encourage or not discipline at all a child putting another hands on another, but I think it's very different, right? If a second grader pushes another second grader in the play, in the schoolyard versus that happening in a high school situation of how we, how we address that on protocol. This one, okay. So at the elementary level, and I'm sure at middle and high, I would say the same is always a conversation, right, because what is recorded sometimes by one student is not exactly what happened. And you always want to make sure that you're hearing from all parties involved. So for example, if someone is brought to my office, then I would talk to them. I always record notes, take notes as to what is occurring, what the child is sharing. And then if they name anyone in there, then always speak to that person alone as well so that they have the opportunity to share what they feel happened without the pressure of the other person there. I always then ask that person who initially maybe brought the concern to me or initially it happened to see, do you want to have a conversation together? Sometimes that is good to have the conversation together. Sometimes someone feels a little nervous having the conversation together. They prefer that the principal has that conversation. And so often times, there's so many layers that are unveiled in that conversation. I would never go to that chart and discipline someone without having that conversation, without going through that whole process. It often takes, I'm not gonna even say minutes, hours, right? Hours and then sometimes days to get to the bottom of something that occurred. I'm not sure if you would like to hear more than that. That's kind of what it looks like at the elementary level. I don't know if Mr. Barrett or.
Sometimes we'll look at camera surveillance if, if need be.
The other thing we would look at is, is history. So if it was the first offense for a student, it would, the consequence would be different than if it was the third, fourth, or fifth, particularly if it was a hands-on situation. So there are a lot of factors to take into account. That's why that record keeping of those notes that Mrs. Dorsey referred to are so important. And of course, communication with the families.
Right. I'll give you a 10, like a one-minute story. I had a group of students brought to me who were fighting on the playground, right? And Mrs. Dorsey, they're punching each other, they're fighting on the playground. So they come to my office, it's kindergartners, there's five of them, and we start talking about it. And in the process of this conversation, we find out that there was a zookeeper and a mommy dinosaur and baby dinosaurs. And the zookeeper was trying to get them back into the zoo. And so they were pulling kids along, trying to get them into the zoo. And so how much better is that to find out that it was, oh, a zookeeper trying to get the mommy dinosaur and the baby dinosaurs back into the zoo versus, oh, there's fighting going on at the La Perch playground? So that's why the conversation is so important, especially at all levels, honestly, to find out what's going on.
So do we have, and this isn't just directed towards you, for all the school levels, do we have protocols in place, say, if there is historic, you know, situations where this is now a second, third, fourth offense that violates our code of conduct? So this still sort of gives like that higher view of what your potential sort of consequence could be. But what are we doing? Do we have, are we consistent across the district that if it's a third offense or so on and so forth, what we're doing?
Again, I feel at the elementary level, it's so individualized, right? Because it could be, it could be the third offense, but it could be a particular situation that's going on with someone in a home because something's happening there and trauma that they've experienced. And there's just so many individual things that go on. Are we holding kids accountable? I believe that we are holding kids accountable, but we're not going for a pound of flesh, right? We're trying to reteach, just like we teach reading, and we teach writing, and we teach math. We're also teaching kindness and safe hands and how we communicate when we're feeling upset or when we're feeling a big emotion that may lead to a pushing, that may lead to a grabbing of someone or, or something else going on. There's always communication where I'm sure they doing the same thing, where you're reaching out to a parent just to share. I often do it with the child there because the child and I call the parent so that the parent can, you know, the child can hear the parent, and we can have that conversation together. And then we all have the same pink slip that goes home. I call it a pink slip, I'm not sure if you all call it a pink slip, but the, the kids have a reflection sheet because it's an opportunity for them to record what they feel happened. And that's also gives the principal a little bit of time because obviously, I'm not always in my office. So if someone's sent to my office, you know, they'll have a little reflection sheet where they write down what they experienced, what was their behavior, how it affected others, and maybe a consequence that they feel is appropriate. So that then, when I'm able to meet with them, I have that as well as my own notes. And then there's a pink slip that gets attached to that, that documents that for families. And you can see the levels of discipline, right? Was it just a conversation? Was it a recess consequence? Was it something more than that? Do they have a reflection sheet to complete? Was it a loss of some special activity that's coming up? And so that is layered upon depending on the offense.
Thank you.
Before you go, two questions. How, from your perspective, how do you feel the policy as it presently is written? Is, how do you feel it's working?
I feel it's working fine at La Perch Elementary, that's all I can say too. And for me at La Perch, at the elementary level, there's much more of, if you want to call it in-school suspension or time in the office with me versus out-of-school suspension. They're just so young for that, and I would rather have them in school getting their work done in my office in a very boring place where they're not interacting with friends or they're not, you know, maybe playing video games at home or doing something at home. We want them just here, yep, you're still learning, getting your work done. Can I use the restroom? Yep, I have one right in my room. And they're like, oh, I'll get you to use the bathroom right in my office. So it's been very effective, I feel.
The second question is, is there any way that you have seen or you think that the policy can be improved, again, from your perspective?
At the elementary level?
Anything you either think is missing, or something that, okay, if we did it this way, it'd be better?
Honestly, not at the elementary level. Mr. Barrett? It's a new team, I don't know if you.
I would say the same. If you would like me to come up, I can, but I would say the same. I think that at the elementary level, it's working well. Dr. Bartz and I would often have conversations last year, and I would refer to the policy as I was walking through situations with her. I found it to be very helpful. So at the elementary level, I think the policy works fine. I think the room for discretion and working with families is really important. I don't have any specific suggestions otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Brevet?
So I think Mrs. Dorsey did a great job of kind of going through that whole investigation process that we all go through at the middle school. Sometimes involves other students and witnesses that we have to involve. So as Mrs. Dorsey said, sometimes one event can eat up a couple hours, if not a couple of days, as you're trying to figure things out to go through that. One of the things that we look at the middle school, again, it's a different level than elementary. So as I always explain to kids, as you move up in level, the expectations keep moving up as well. So certainly, something that a consequence would give to a sixth grader wouldn't be the same thing we would give it to a senior in all likelihood, you know, obviously, depending upon circumstances that we're going through. But we also look at it as a progressive discipline approach. So depending upon what we're talking about, some things are, it's a lunch detention, it's a loss of a privilege, it's an after-school detention, and kind of, you know, build up through that process. Not to say depending upon what happened, you can't jump because you see in the policy, it lists different options that can occur, you know, based in the process over there. But we kind of look at that same day, looking at a child's record, looking at all the circumstances that have taken place and determine consequences. If it's a repeat person, then that obviously increases those consequences as you move along. But our goal always is, regardless of what the consequence is, we also have to work with that child coming back to the school because the goal is to let them understand that everyone makes mistakes. Some mistakes have more severe consequences than others, but still want them to learn from that and not be repeating those mistakes. And then we have to put measures in place to work with that child as well. We also have situations where things, we put other restrictions on them where we have the EUOPAS system, and the high school and I have the EUOPAS system, that we can set it up so if there are two students that have a conflict, we can put it into the system so that they can't go to the lab together. So if one of them is already out at the lab and the other one goes to sign out, there's an alert and the teacher knows that they can't go at that moment. We have had some students where whenever they're changing classes, there's someone out in the hallway watching them change classes to get from point A to point B. We have some students where the teacher has to call if they have to leave a room at all, and we have an adult escort them to certain places. So there's lots of different measures we put in place when we're dealing with those situations. When there's conflicts, we develop safety plans to support individuals to make sure students feel safe in the building. That kind of is like that whole process to go through. But we really kind of try to be, we make sure we're consistent within our building. So things that if we're giving something, it's a three-day suspension, then that's what it's going to be to go through that. But again, there's always circumstances, so you have to have some gray and have us use our professional judgment and recognizing that we, we know who the students are. We're working on the students, and sometimes there are things going on, not to make excuses, but that, you know, come into consideration. But there are other things we put in place, even if a child has been out of school for a suspension, to make sure we're working with that child so that they make that a choice. This is the ultimate goal that we're working through.
Questions?
Unless the same two questions that I had. And that is, how, how do you feel the current policy as it's written is working out? Now, here, we're only talking for the middle school.
Yeah, I would say that the policy is working. I mean, I did notice if it was just a semantics thing, but I know in some of the lists, they're not listed in order of increasing severity. So maybe some of those just kind of look in that sequence. But it doesn't actually mean that you have to do the first one before you get to the second one, before you get to the third one, if, you know, includes suspension. You can jump along that continuum. But no, I think the grayness is there. I mean, whether or not you put in minimums for some things, so everything is a maximum of 10 because everything in that policy, if it's, can go up to 10, it just says maximum 10. I mean, obviously, there are some things where it's not a suspendable offense, so that's listed as zero, and perhaps that's something you consider. But then you'd have to be mindful of the different levels, you know, in terms of, it is Dorsey's at the elementary school level in particular, to go through that.
Is there anything that you could think of that you would change or could be changed or something that you think is problematic or whatever in the current policy?
I would say problematic. I think the only thing that I think is something that, probably not for this review, but that all administrators across the state, especially at middle and high school, have to deal a lot with, social media, Snapchat, TikTok, all of those things add a lot. We typically don't like Mondays because it's after a weekend and things have happened. And while it's happening outside. While it's happening outside of school, it does end up having an impact in our schools, so we spend an awful lot of time on that. I don't think across the state, any of us have a great solution for how to stop that stuff that's happening.
Right, and by that, you're not, obviously, talking about them using it in the classroom, you're talking about them using it outside, and then the results transfer-
The unbelievably inappropriate sometimes, and scary things that kids will write and say and post on Snapchat, and Snapchat, and TikTok, and all of those, yes. Certainly, I know, you know, it's a lot of times we dare parents, and there's a shock that that's something that their, their child had done, but it's not great technology for adolescents. That would be the only thing if I could fix, but that's well beyond us as well.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Leblin, high school?
Yeah, I'm not sure, would add a lot more. You know, what my colleagues already shared is pretty accurate, you know? These are, you know, kids make mistakes, these are learning opportunities, you know, in our discussions with them, we have a responsibility to get to the bottom of what occurred to the best of our ability. You know, as Dr. Bové said, you know, we have safety plans, we use the E.O.P.A.S., you know, interventions to prevent things from happening. The other thing I would say is, we also use our counselors, our clinicians, our school psychologists, to support our students in the decision-making. So a lot of times, following a suspension, or following a, you know, a bad decision, we'll capitalize on their availability and the ability to have conversations, you know, to process, to do additional processing with our students, in terms of thinking about how they can avoid that circumstance, or the situation, or the conflict in the future. So, you know, the decisions we make are our judgment calls, based on the policy that as it's written, and the guidelines that are in the policy. You know, to the two questions, I think we, I wouldn't change anything in the policy, I think it is working at the high school. You know, we're not perfect, you know, we learn from our, you know, the decisions we make, and sometimes we have to adjust going forward. You know, I wrote a email to an individual, I'll share, I won't name the individual or anything, but, or at any time, any time, this is to a student, any time there's a situation like this, I won't get into the particular situation, each party usually blames the other. That's exactly what has happened in these circumstances, which makes our decisions difficult, and at times, feeling unfair to those affected, individual students. In this case, we've done our best to be fair to both students, and I'm confident that this is a learning opportunity for both of you. So, you know, when you have situations involving multiple students, it is a learning opportunity. You know, thankfully, some of the more serious situations are few and far between, and a lot of times, it's an individual student, you know, who made a poor decision in front of, you know, in the cafeteria, or in the hallway, or, you know, in their interactions with a faculty member. So, you know, they're still developing, they're going to make poor choices at times, and our job is to coach them, to guide them, and, again, hold them counsel. And I think we do a good job of that. You know, Mrs. Dalio and Ms. Cordermash have done a great job getting to know students, and, like I said, to your two questions, I wouldn't change anything, and I don't think, I think it is working at high school.
Thank you. Further questions, school committee, at all?
I have questions, just in general.
Sure.
Or maybe, so the chart that we have, that shows sort of like the max number of suspension, is that something that was based off of, like, state laws? What, where, is that where that comes from?
For the Department of Education, so the maximum is up to 10, after that, it goes to school committee, because you're looking at expulsion.
Sure. And I'm not looking to, for the record, increase any maximums or anything like that. I'm questioning things like, we have fighting, assault, and battery of a student is 10 days, but it has mediation and social suspension first, where fighting or assault and battery of a teacher is immediate suspension. Why we would differ, like, on the age of the person, if assault and battery is, and I'm not looking for somebody to answer that right this moment, unless you'd like to, but I think I just have a couple different questions on-
If I could just answer a little bit, those are in there as a range. It doesn't mean, for instance, with fighting, assault, and battery of students, that you start with mediation. It really depends on what the situation is. As the administrators are saying, it might be severe enough that it requires a suspension, not mediation, okay? So that's just a range of possible consequence, doesn't mean that for everything, it has to be progressive, although that is, that is certainly what the goal is. I think what Ms. Dorsey and Dr. Bové detailed, and I just want to expand on it a little bit, is that the investigations, it's, sometimes it looks like it's a really easy case of two students getting into an altercation, whether verbal or physical. Oftentimes, it can take days to go through an investigation, so the consequences aren't necessarily meted out individually, immediately, until everything comes out, particularly when it begins outside of the school, and it is brought in, where we do have a legal obligation to investigate, to make sure that the parents are made aware of what is happening, what the investigation is, and certainly what the outcome is.
I was just going to add, you know, due process is part of course, no matter what. You got to hear each student's version, or the version of an individual student who's been accused of some behavior, and, you know, and our job is to get to the bottom of it as best we can, you know? The cameras certainly help if it's something that's in an area where it's public. Oftentimes, and in most cases, you know, the behavior is not visible, and we have to interview that student. Oftentimes, sometimes the truth doesn't fully come out, and we have to prod and probe a little bit, and rely on witnesses as well. So, but going back to a minute ago, you know, the ranges you have, and again, typically, we follow progressive discipline. Again, I would say across all schools, but there are times when, you know, you have, you know, the word used mainly on assault, you know, a blind-side assault on a student would automatically be something, you know, you'd automatically go to five or 10 days, depending on guidance, the circumstances, but you might have a fight between two individuals that escalated a little bit, and, you know, fights also run the range of severity, so you, you know, you kind of, it's a judgment call ultimately, so.
Thank you.
Is the public allowed to comment?
The public can be allowed, no matter what. First, I'd like the school committee, I think, to do that.
No, I think my other questions were among that too, and I apologize up to Leo, because he already sat down, but, I mean, we have, like, illegal drugs on here as well, and included in that is tobacco, and I, we all know vaping is a huge problem, right? And I just, I don't think it's plausible for you to be able to suspend everyone for 10 days that you catch vaping, because you'd have an attendance problem in the high school. But what are we doing that we can make so that there are greater consequences? I have to be honest, I think in many situations, and I don't think this is a fault of any administrator whatsoever, but children are not fearing the consequences that are being received in many situations, and how we can work together to, to improve that process so that there is, and fear is not the right word, right? No, children should fear coming to school, but, but you should fear disappointment, right? They should fear disappointing the administrators, and that there would be a consequence because they did something that broke a policy that would then require the administrators to take an action that would not be favorable, right? Missing a lunch, or missing something like that. And I, and I don't think it's a problem more in the elementary school, but as we get through the middle school and the high school, and I think that's just an age progressive thing, right, that we've seen, we've seen an uptick in this, in my opinion. And I think this is outside of, like, a bullying report, we're looking at statistics. I think there's a lot of things that come under this code of conduct that wouldn't fall under, like, a bullying or harassment thing.
I think that's correct, and also, we have a different age in which things are videotaped now, so a lot of these behaviors may and probably did occur, but now they're much more public, and things are also occurring where the bullying is starting, and it's very invisible now, right? When I was in high school, you knew who your bully was, and as long as you were home, you were safe. Now kids don't have that protection. The internet is alive and well, anybody can assume the identity of somebody else, and it is pervasive, so being able to unpeel the layers of that. But I do think, in terms of the administrative team that's in place, some of these more severe consequences, we're not only taking seriously, but certainly, the administrators are coming to resolutions with students. There certainly are at times, appropriately, more severe consequences. We never want students to be excluded from their education, so we do make sure it occurs, but there are times where the consequences have been so severe, and I'm going to say, you're right, that mainly occurs at the secondary level, not so much with our elementary friends, where a separation through a suspension is, is necessary. And that range of, has there been something that has happened before? Are these two people that are friends, and something set them off? Is there a third party involved? But I do think the team is doing a very good job in terms of the investigation, the consequences. What is not apparent so much, unfortunately, because it can be, is the confidentiality of the students, and, and in terms of the consequences that are being meted out. I will say, and I'm glad Dr. Bové's is coming back up, social media has made issues much worse, and certainly to the point of being disruptive to the educational environment. Lori?
I just want to add, when you ask about impact it has on students, it's a range. I've had students, I mean, I spent 10 years as an assistant principal, unfortunately, that's not my full-time job anymore, I moved to the principal. I still dabble in it though, because it's still part of the job, but there are kids that are simple, just a lunch detention or detention has a huge impact, and that child never does another thing again, because, you know, that's part of that impact, but a lot of it, sometimes there are some kids that it doesn't have the impact we thought it would, but the ones that have the most impact are the ones that are, have that consequence at home, that follow-up at home, but that's kind of important, and, you know, in this day and age, unfortunately, some kids, their home life isn't a great home life, so realistically, they're kind of missing that piece, and that role model, and, you know, that kind of consequence that way. But, I mean, there are kids that are impacted, that, they do that, they're more afraid that, oh my God, do you have to, they want to bargain with you not to call their parents, because they know they're going to get in trouble, they're going to, you know, lose some kind of privilege, so it still has that impact. It's, but, I mean, I remember when I was a child, there were kids that didn't have an impact on them, but, I mean, we try our best to make sure it does, and try to have that impact, at least, you know, within the building, because that's all I have, is the impact in the building, so losing some privileges, or knowing that you can't just leave a classroom and go to the bathroom, like any other child, that you have to get escorted, does have that impact on that student, at least for what we can control during the school day, so just wanted to kind of share that.
Thank you.
Mr. Burke?
I just wanted to add one other piece, because you were talking about incidents and consequences, and I think Jose alluded to this, so I'd like to just add on to it. There's a lot that happens after the consequence. So let me give you an example. So elementary students that may not get along, or they may be friends one second and not friends the second, the next second, which happens a lot. There may be a safety plan put in place after the consequence. So the consequence might be, you know, a lunch detention, right, after the first incident, but then there's a safety plan saying, okay, we know that these two frenemies who love each other, but also compete so hard when they're playing soccer, it's not healthy for either of them. We may have a plan in place that said, on these days, you're playing soccer, on these days, you're playing soccer. So there's a lot of other things that go into effect after, that's not as simple as a consequence. And Dr. Leblin was right about the clinicians, they're an important piece of that, and also the families. It's really important to be able to, after the fact, and while you're doing the investigation, communicate with the families, listen, here's what we have in place, to make sure that this doesn't happen again, support your child, without giving away confidentiality of what's happening with the other student. So just wanted to add that piece, because it, it sounds like we're making it really simple, like incident consequence, incident consequence, and it's anything but, and actually, most of the hard work happens after the fact.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I, did you skip a-
I, you go first if you'd like, if you're sure.
Okay. Yeah, I have a couple things. Having had experience, I mean, with social media, we know that's problematic, but it also adds something that we didn't, we never had before. And I have, I got to tell you, over probably 10, 12 years now, at different times, when I was on the school committee, I have gotten emails and texts with videos of things that have actually happened, while they're happening, live, and all that. I mean, so it, it puts it in our laps, not just something that, oh yeah, this happened at the school. And so that's something you, we can't deny, that happens. The other thing that happens is, and I, I know we can't, you know, talk about what's happened to, we'll say, the offender, or one of, one of the kids, either of the kids, whatever, in a, in a situation, and I understand that, that makes a lot of sense. However, if I were a parent, and my kid had gotten, you know, beat up, or whatever the case may be, I would want to know what's going to happen, so that this doesn't happen again. And so I did hear some things here where, you know, it looks like we're working on some things, to hopefully work on the future in this, but that is a big thing, of what can we do to keep it from happening? And I got to tell you, one thing I hear from parents a lot is, you know, they want to know how long this kid gets suspended for. And again, I understand, we can't tell about personal situations, but back to that social media again, they find out, and they all know. And actually, there's a lot of disinformation. Oh, he got suspended for two days, oh, he got suspended for four days, and it, it sends in the public, confusion leads to distrust sometimes, and so we got to clear some of these type of things up. But more importantly, you know, I would, I would want to know, for instance, if, I have a son and a daughter, if somebody popped them in school, I'd want to know, all right, what day is this kid coming back to school? You don't have to tell me how long he's suspended, but I want to know. I want my kid to know to be ready. And there's a couple of bad things that can happen. Kid can be ready and want to pop the kid, we don't want that to happen. Kid can be, can know, and then be scared. I don't think we want that to happen either. We don't want the kid in school scared. What we want is, that the kid ready, so that the kid can go in, back to school, know they're going to face this other person, and as much as they can, hold their head up high and just deal with it. But if we don't have the kid, and this is where the parent comes in, hopefully psychologically helping them know what's going on, so we got to know some of these things. They got to have an idea of something, without telling all the personal information. These are some of the things I think we have to look at, as to how we deal with some of these situations, and how we deal with the public, without, you know, blabbing everything or whatever. I know some people just want to know, because they want to know everything. But there are real, realistic reasons why some information, without breaking confidentiality, needs to be there to help our system after the three, four, five, whatever number of days it is, when somebody shows back up on the scene, and putting the piece back together. So, I mean, those are some of the things, and I've seen these, I get a lot of phone calls, not so many phone calls anymore, mostly it's emails these days, but I see a lot of phone calls, people talking, stopping and talking to me about situations. They're not making it up, they tell, they tell me, okay? And what bothers me is, I, obviously, I can't tell them much, but it bothers me that this thing kind of starts winding around there, and it just, it just does not lead to the, the level of trust, or the level of, I think that we want people to know that the situation is being handled, and not just handled, but also hopefully improved, so that's my comments. Mr. Case?
No, it's been very informative. I, discipline's so complex, and I agree, you know, I'm glad, it sounds like our administrators have a firm hand on it, and, you know, certainly appreciate that every situation is unique, and they do need that flexibility. I understand confidentiality, and I absolutely agree with your sentiments, it's, if your child was assaulted, or the victim, that's difficult to not know the name of the person, what happened to them when they're returning. So I guess, a couple of quick questions, and maybe Dr. Bartz, be the one who can answer, or, I guess they're more geared to the high school level. I guess my first question is, do we hold reentry meetings for students returning from longer-term suspensions?
We hold, we hold reentry meetings for all suspensions, whether they're short-term or long, and in fact, and the team is all nodding yes from the high school. We do that at the elementary school, we do it at the middle school. So how students come back in, and the plan that's in place, not just for, let's take a more clear-cut case, one student punches another, we'll call it the perpetrator, so certainly having the plan in place, and a reentry in terms of how that person can come in, and also hold his or her head up high, but also understand what the guidelines are, and what guidelines are in place, but also the student that might have been the target of, let's say, hitting or pushing, knowing what safety precautions, being, having the parent being part of that planning as well. But all students do have a reentry meeting after a consequence, along with the- But all students do have a reentry meeting after a consequence, along with the family.
And then my, my second question, it sounds like you were kind of alluding to it, Dr. Libano was alluding to it as well. So we talked about the safety plan. I'm assuming the safety plan is really for the person who was assaulted?
It could be for both.
Okay. So is the parent and the student who is the victim involved in the creation of that safety plan?
Yes, do, but I'm going to call a member of each of the levels to come up so they can explain that, because the safety plans are a really important part of the discipline is how the student is able to come back. And also, as was said by Richard, what is going on forward so it doesn't happen again?
So is this, I know they're going to come up, but is, I guess just to clarify, because it sounds like you're saying the safety plan applies to the perpetrator.
It applies to both.
But I guess my concern more is, is the person, and I guess I'm really specifying a situation where there's an assault or something like that, the person, and sometimes it's mutual combat and, you know, but sometimes if a student was assaulted and do no fault of their own, I guess what I'm really asking is, is that student, how does that student, do they automatically get a safety plan? Does a parent have to request a safety plan? Is it automatically part of the reentry process? Is it shared with the parent?
It'll depend on what the circumstance is, but I think each of our levels can talk about what that safety plan looks like and depending on the example, who would be involved in that, whether it's the school psychologist, the social work staff, each of the teachers may be a part of that as well as the administration. Paul, why don't you come up for elementary?
Could we take a minute to huddle?
Lori or Kyle, if you'd like, to come up from the middle school and then someone from the high school as well. Because the safety plans are something that we do often.
So I'll give you an example of a safety plan that we took together last year. So it was, it was a situation that involved multiple students. And it was really, at elementary school, most of the time when there are physical educations, it's everyone involved. It's very rarely someone planning to assault another student. It's usually an argument. So we drafted a safety plan. We got input from the school psychologist, school social worker, in this case, also special educators who work with some of the students and the parents. Not all of the parents always agree. And so we have to work out a plan that keeps all of the kids safe, but also make sure that they're getting the services they need, that they get access to the privileges that all the other kids have. Like we can't keep kids away from recess. That's not healthy for kids. It's actually against Rhode Island general law. So we need to have a plan if it happens at recess and make sure that all the kids have access to recess. Maybe they can't have recess in the same place all of the time. So it really is a case-by-case basis, but in my particular school, when the safety plan is agreed upon, it's put in writing. And so everybody has copies of it so that later on, if there's a question, no one can say, I wasn't aware of the plan, I didn't know when it started, I didn't know when it ended. And so last year, again, the safety plan, we reviewed it twice. And with input from the teachers and the families, we made a decision about when the kids were ready to move off of the plan. And so that's also part of the process. It could be a plan for a short amount of time. It might be a plan if there's bullying involved or if it's been an ongoing issue. It might, it might be for a period of months and then slowly but surely add back some of those responsibilities and freedoms until, okay, we know, these kids know it's part of their responsibility to walk away if they're not getting along. But that's, that's one example of the process that we've done. But everyone is slightly different. It really depends on the situation, the students involved, what exactly happened, is there a history, those types of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle from the middle school?
Good evening. Mr. Barrett did a wonderful job explaining that. We followed a very similar process at the middle school. Well, Dr. Burevays and I will draft a plan. But in these situations, parents are always brought in. We review the plan explicitly with them. There is a parent signature as well as a student signature on there so that everyone who is involved in that situation, they will, they review it, they agree to it, and then it's our job to really make sure that that plan is enforced. It's more collaborative if there are changes that are suggested during those meetings. It's something that we will update, send to parents, just to make sure that everyone in that is returning or in the school feels safe.
Sarah Kordman from the high school?
I'm going to echo my colleagues, but I'm just going to add another frame to his work because I think post-COVID, it's so common for us to talk about social emotional learning. But what we don't often talk about is the research and evidence base behind the trauma-informed care that our schools are expertly trained in providing. I nod to our student support teams at every level. I think without those teams, our jobs would be that much more difficult. There is a level of care, a level of concern that is given to every case, every incident that we're involved in at all levels in this district. I'd also like to point out though, that post-COVID, the state of Rhode Island and the U.S. federal government launched some non-regulatory guidance in 2022 that's really worth your time in investigating and reviewing, particularly for students with disabilities and who have 504 plans. That non-regulatory guidance would be very informative, I think, as this committee looks to making revision and updates to your policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. But I guess, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. I guess my last question is, we have a student who's been assaulted. Like I said, this is a situation where it's not mutual combat, it's a student has just, you know, wasn't, didn't see it coming. Do we have in the safety plan as an option? And I understand it's really difficult to do because of schedules and things, but is there a no contact type of thing? Like what if they were in class together? Do we ever, and I, I know it's really tough and-
It's a great question.
But do we, almost a in-school version of restraining order where they cannot pass together in the hallway? I know that's really difficult. But in extreme cases, is that something that's ever done or considered?
It is. I'm going to have Dr. Burevays and Dr. Libano talk about that again, how it has been used at both levels.
So the answer to your question is yes. We have in extreme cases, I mean, we try not to change kids' schedules once a school year starts, but in extreme cases, we have jumbled student schedules. We have, you know, really extreme case would have changed at the middle level, like change a child's team, but that's not something that, you know, happens automatically. It's in those severe cases. But we also have, we look at kids' schedules, we have made adjustments where maybe they'll be in a different section of a class. The only thing where sometimes you have difficulty doing that if it's like a band class and there's only one section for grades of the band, that type of thing. But there's also an addition to our infinite campus, our student management system that's Carolina, maybe three or four years ago, that we can put this thing called student constraints. So we can enter students' names and it won't let me when I'm scheduling, you know, for the new school year, it won't let kids be scheduled in the same classes. It sends up a red flag and you can have it where it's a strict, so that it will not, it will give you the red flag that there's a problem, there's a, you know, a strict conflict between students here. But it also can do things where it's like should not be. And I sometimes use the should not be when I have twins or triplets at a grade level and the parents, you know, they really prefer not to have all their classes together. It will allow them to be in them not, so it can be used that way as well. But we use it in the discipline thing of when we've had conflicts, we automatically put things in and we can roll it over from one school year to the next school year so we don't have to remember everything. We have some students that have had that and it's, you know, their second year because of the conflicts and it helps eliminate that and it makes it easy for us to kind of track that. But in real time, if something happens this school year, we do look at kids' schedules and see if there's any kind of adjustments that we can make. But again, that's something, you know, that we don't, you know, take lightly, but obviously we've been able to do that. So it is something we can do. And then things like making sure, like in the cafeteria, assigning kids to, this is where you're going to sit, this is where you're going to sit, those are your tables and therefore we're not worried about, you know, those kind of things. That's kind of the structures that we put in place.
Thank you.
The only thing I would add to that is that, you know, besides schedule changes, are using e-hole pass, which you heard about earlier, to block kids from remaining to each other during classes, as well as switching to lunches, knows where they go to their lunches.
Thank you.
Any questions from the superintendents? Anybody in the public? Come up to the podium, just say your name and address.
Hi, Shayna, Thornton Road in Smithfield. I appreciate everybody's comments and everyone from the schools who has spoken up. Can anybody tell me if their daughter or son has been assaulted in school? Because I got a call two weeks ago that my daughter was punched in the face while she was sitting at her lunch table. She's 12 years old, didn't see it coming. I understand there's a consequence. I don't disagree with the school for whatever that consequence is, but they were not able to tell me how long the suspension was for. So when I have to tell my 12-year-old daughter to go to school, but you don't know if this person is going to be here today, you don't know if they're going to be here tomorrow. You talk about personal information, but it was done in a public place. Everybody saw it, it's on video. So I don't, I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. This is my 16th year in the school district and I just see things getting progressively worse. And like you said, people are going to find out anyway. You know, I was told, I'll hear from the students. I heard three days, I've heard five days. I talked to the counselor, he said insignificant. Like what is extreme? Like she was punched in the face? I don't, I don't understand as a parent why I can't be told what the consequences are. Obviously, you can't tell me who it is, you know, I find that out, but just finding out on your own is just unacceptable to me. And I don't want any parent to ever have to get that phone call, whether it was a one-time deal or not. If you physically put your hands on somebody else, there needs to be consequences and they need to be, you know, public. And, you know, I send my daughter and my three children, you know, to somewhere I'm supposed to feel safe and I'm terrified every day that I'm going to get that phone call. And it's just, I don't want any parent to have to go through it again. I understand it's not a one case fits all. You talk about elementary school, but fifth graders are very close to sixth graders. So I don't know. It's not, you know, all dinosaurs and punching and shoving like my daughter was assaulted. And I just want to know what can be done to, you know, me to have peace of mind to tell my daughter, today's the day, you know, she's coming back, obviously, you know, she's coming back, but why can't that be relayed to us? It just doesn't, doesn't make sense to me. And if it was any child, you know, in the same position that I am, I know you would always do the same. So I don't know, I appreciate everybody listening and commenting, but I just think this whole protecting, you know, the bully where, you know, my daughter, you know, is a victim. And you know, we, we don't know what happened. We found out that there was lunch detention after, which made me happy, you know, it happened in the cafeteria, so you take some privileges away, but I don't know why that can't be relayed. My daughter might have felt better knowing, you know, that, that this happened. So I don't know.
I believe you have it, Dan.
So, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any further school committee comments at all? If not, okay. You obviously threw things, and if anybody feels that there's something that we can't do or should do on the policy, certainly forward it on to the superintendent and it will take some time for her to look at these things until we go. And she can obviously run by the attorney too, to make sure everything's legit and make sure it fits into administration or whatever. All right. That's it on that one.
Administrators, thank you very much. Thank you.
Let's see. Number, back to number 17. Discuss and approve of superintendent to attend the annual DM group conference.
This is the district management group. And just a little bit of an aside, this is one of the groups that we're working for that Sarah was able to get a grant for, that is working with our middle and high school as we look at the schedules. So it is a group that brings together superintendents around strategic planning and current issues of the day. It is a two-day conference that would be in New York City. The conference would not have any registration or hotel costs. Those would be covered as part of the grant.
Motion to approve the superintendent's request to attend the DM group conference on March 6th through 8th, 2024.
Second?
Second. Motion has been made in second. Further questions? Well, at least you missed out on the flooding in New York City, so they, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. The ayes have it. Item 18. Discuss and approve revive the Roots contract.
If there's any questions, Sarah Monaco has this terrific opportunity to answer any questions.
I think my question, so it says 50 hours, $50 an hour during spring and summer months. So that, I did it out. But usually we have parents that volunteer their time. It seems like a big cost to have, like what is that maintenance? Is it something a parent can do to save us that amount of money instead of having them come and do it or?
So this is all provided through a grant. It was written into the, yeah, it's not local funds. It's been sporadic at best to get parents to maintain our gardens and now that we have it as such an important part of our curriculum and we have this opportunity for the next two years through the Healthy Meals Incentives Grant, that's why we did it with, of course, we need a sustainability plan, realizing that local funds wouldn't be able to pick that up.
We've seen the fruits of this relationship, which is fantastic. So I'm glad to keep, keep it going and hopefully, I don't know if this was a yearly grant you applied for, it's a multi-year grant.
This is two years.
Two years. I mean, I can keep working at grant magic, but you know, please, anything you can do to sustain it, because it's just, I mean, they're in Smithfield, they're great, my daughter's volunteering at their, they have Oktoberfest for kids, but, but their event that they just had last week, you know?
Stock kids.
Yeah. So it's a, it's a great organization. I'm glad that you've cultivated a great relationship. I've seen the gardens.
Cultivated, there you go.
But no, it's great. So this is wonderful.
Okay, this will require a motion.
Motion to approve revive Roots contract?
In a second.
Second.
Motion has been made in a second. Any further questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. The ayes have it. Item 19. Second reading and approval of the district's revised procurement requirements policy.
This came about, the committee had a first reading at the last meeting. This is a change for our fruit services, part of the policy, and it is required based on why, and it has been reviewed by the attorney.
Questions? Okay, this requires a motion and a second.
So moved, second reading.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. No further questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. The ayes have it. We did 20 already. 21. Discuss report on inventory, which is in there. Last time you had the old report or report from a year ago, this is now updated.
This is updated with all of the departments and certainly with us being able to get into the schools that were closed during the summer.
No questions. We'll move on to item 22. Communications, which has a copy of resignations, retirement, retirements, new hires in the district, and now the superintendent's report.
I really have no report. The schools have been very busy. It's been active, a lot of activities. I feel like we're in full gear and progressing forward. There was a fantastic unit-to-day program at Pleasant View. I'm sorry, the principal's not there, but it was, it was sponsored by C-LAG. Also, each of the schools have had an inclusivity day as well. The high school will be doing that later on in the fall.
Okay. Public forum, anybody? Consider items to add to future agendas. If nothing, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.